We called to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. I apologize for convening a little bit late today. We were a little late concluding our study meeting. Note that Mayor Ron Bigelow and Councilwoman Karen Lane are excused tonight. We want to recognize Representative Elizabeth Waite in the audience with us. And we're always happy to have our other elected officials from other bodies with us. And I skipped the opening ceremony, but we do have an opening ceremony tonight that was arranged for by the mayor. We have with us tonight Mr. Etimani Mafu and Mrs. Sehney Mafu, representing the Tongan Interfaith Coalition and the National Tongan American Society. And I believe Mrs. Sehney Mafu is going to give us a little presentation, some information. Please come forward and view that.
Hello, my name is Sehney Mafu, and I work for the city, but I'm here tonight representing the National Tongan American Society and the Interfaith Coalition. They're putting together a Christmas program this Sunday, December 8th, from 7:00 to 9:30, and they're asking the mayor to be the guest of honor. Most of the attendees are Pacific Islanders or Tongans that reside here in West Valley They have put this Christmas program in the past 24 years. And so the Tongan community are really happy to meet the mayor and, you know, participate in this Christmas celebration.
Where will this be?
It's going to be over at the Tongan United Methodist Church. It's on Crystal Avenue in the Chesterfield area.
This Sunday at what time?
7:00 to 9:30.
And they're all welcome there?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else you'd like us to know?
That's it.
Then thank you.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda is the minutes of November 26, 2019. Do the council for any review or discussion or motion.
I moved this through for minutes for November 26?
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved unanimously. This brings us to item six on our agenda, which is the comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to come and express their opinions, their thoughts, their concerns, things that they see that need improving, things that they'd like us to do or not do. It is not a debate, it is not a discussion. We're not going to take any action on the things that are brought to us tonight because they're not on our agenda. It's not fair to the rest of the residents for you to bring us a great idea or any idea that we act on immediately without having it on our agenda appropriately noticed. All comments should be directed to me, and each person may take up to five minutes with a 30-minute total. So if we don't get through everybody, but we've expended 30 minutes, we'll stop. And we do have a list of those that have signed up to speak today, and so we'll call them in order and see if we can get through them all. First, we have Dave Cromenhuck.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I appreciate this opportunity. We're very grateful for the reconstruction project on 4100 South. We look forward to that being finished very soon, and we have a lot of patience with it because we realize what it's going to do for our area. But as a result, for the moment, we have a lot of traffic trouble as a result of that because traffic is backing up at the intersections because of the construction. We have people cutting through the neighborhood, not respecting the neighborhood as they drive through. Most of it is going through very, 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 very fast. You know, you hear their engines revving up, and they're going down the road going 55, 60 miles an hour. And one prime example, someone driving a large Infiniti going south on 4850, must be going 55, 60 miles an hour, not even knowing where they're going because they got halfway down the street and couldn't decide where they're going to go after that, slamming on their brakes, you know, skidding and so on, and turning around and speeding off. So what they're doing is they get frustrated with the traffic, and they cut through the neighborhood and try to make up time by excessive speeding. So what I'm asking the city council or the mayor tonight is if we could have more traffic enforcement in the area to keep those speeds down. There are still, I mean, in our own neighborhood, we still have children in the area that have expressed to me that they fear this traffic that's going through. And it's getting worse. There's getting to be more and more of that going on. And so if we could have more patrol going through more regularly to take care of, you know, to try to circumvent this problem, we'd appreciate it very much. Also, I work for UDOT, I understand pavement very well. I'm part of what designs that. I'm a little bit concerned about some of the heavy semi-truck traffic coming from the project down our street. I'm willing to put up with it, it's going to be fine, but it seems like sometimes a weight limit might be an issue, that it might start to crack up our road, our street. So maybe some attention could be paid towards that as far as whether it's going to hold up, and maybe some repairing can be done after the construction is over as a result of that. Let's see. And I think that's about all I have, just, you know, a little more traffic control, traffic enforcement. It seems like we've had some issues lately with people parking on both sides of the road and a little wind car can get through at a time, you know. Is there an ordinance for that? If there's not, maybe there's some, not an ordinance, but maybe a traffic law for that, maybe that's something that needs to be considered as well. Outside of that, you know, I think the city is doing a lot of great things for us, and we've noticed some things better. My wife wanted me to tell you that she was very happy to see plows going up our street on Thanksgiving. So we appreciate that. And thank you for your time, but please consider, you know, more traffic enforcement on our, in our area, 4850 and so on, because people are cutting through and trying to make up time at very high speeds.
Thank you, Mr. Cromenhuck. And for everybody's understanding, we also, it's not just the city council listening to you, we have our executive staff, which includes Public Works, the police chiefs, so forth. So to that end, your concern about the speeding and also the semis related specifically to 4850 West, south of 4100 South?
That's the street I live on, but I've noticed it on 4900 West as well. The semi trucks, I know that they have to do it, and they don't really have much of a choice, but if there could be consideration, some kind of future for the pavement, because I'm sure it's going to have an impact on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Bustillos.
Good evening, I'm from the Ballard View subdivision also, and this is one of my biggest concerns here. The last time I spoke, it was for the same issues. We're at an all-time high now for speeding, and this is the construction companies, everybody through certain times of the morning into the evenings. Even some of the people that are cutting through delivering their kids to school and stuff like that are making threats. Since there's not sidewalks on a lot of these streets, 4850, someone, 4900, you have to walk if you're walking your dogs out on the street. Well, when you don't make your way over, especially with some snow removal, you're getting threats from different peoples. I hate to see somebody get an altercation because of this issue. In the past, we have made some suggestions to certain officials, and we're told because they weren't cost-effective, but yet I see in different subdivisions located around our area, they are including speed signs, which seem to help. A four-way stop at 4850 on that four-way intersection would help out immensely because when we've had law enforcement there for other reasons, it's funny how people slow down, slow down to what it's supposed to be in a residential area of 20,000. So we still need help, but it's at an all-time high. And this is, if somebody could talk to the construction companies too, because it's Geneva Rock, and there's subcontractors that are hauling dirt through our neighborhood that are speeding. So if you're out walking your dog or walking your kids or whatever it might be, you could be in danger. Well, thank you, and I appreciate you giving me time to listen to this.
Thank you for coming. We certainly wanted to address any safety issues. Next, we have Richard Draper.
Good evening, and I'm glad to be here tonight. I don't know if any of you remember, I was here in the summer, and I talked to you about West Valley's website. And I said to you, West Valley's got probably the best website in this valley. It's a good website, it has kept up to date, and the problem of it is most residents don't know about it. The website has a lot of information out there, probably more than anyone could even think about, you know, devouring. So I go out there and I try to kind of isolate areas where I believe would be the most beneficial for the people of the city to understand. I go out and look, about 20% or 15% of the website is made up of the municipal ordinances. There's 24 municipal ordinances, there's four ordinances that I believe are, they're ordinances that cause most of our problems, most of our police calls, most of our code enforcement calls. If people knew and understood those four ordinances better, I think that you would see some change in this city. The four are this. The criminal code, that's Title 21. Traffic code, that's Title 22. Animal control is Title 23, and health code is 24. 24 is a big one. 24 is the landscaping, the weeds, the rodents, the dangerous places on people's yards. 24 also includes graffiti. So these ordinances are pretty basic, and I think that the people in this valley need to know, or in this city, need to understand what they are. Now, how do we do that? It's hard to get people to go to a website, and how do we do this? I think there's, I can only think of two potential communication methods. I know that everyone in this city gets a bill every month, a sewer and a water bill, right? Whether that be by mail, that be electronic. I think there's some opportunity to start teaching people, you know, now, maybe you sit there and think, people know this, right? And the reason I know they don't know this is because I interview my neighbors. I interview my neighbors who have lived in this city ever since it's been a city, and they're shocked when I tell them about some of these codes. They're like, and these are good people, they're not trying to break the law, they're not trying to be, you know, a bad citizen, they're not trying, they're just unaware, uneducated. So I look at, that has potential for these four, and I focus on these four, and I invite you to go out and look at all the 24 and see if you think I'm right. I don't think, most people in the city need to know a lot about, you know, what do I need to know about zoning, what do I need to know about licensing, what do I need to know, you know, about some of these things that might come up once or twice in their lifetime. But when it comes to these four, I think that that relates to our everyday activity in this city. So I think that that, you know, that billing that is done, also I know that, I don't know how often we publish the West Valley News, is it quarterly? Is it, I don't know exactly what the time. So that's another potential methodology for educating the good people of the city. And then once again, I want to compliment those who develop and maintain the website. It's better than West Jordan, it's better than South Jordan, it's better than Sandy. I've looked at all of them, I've got kids that live in all of these places, so it is an excellent website. We need to do more to educate the people on what's out there. I think these four ordinances are a really good place to start. And then I just will kind of just finish up by seconding some of the things that my neighbors have told you tonight. I live on the corner, I live on the corner of 4250 South and 4850 West. That's where all these trucks come up. I watch them every day. I think, every day I think, oh, my mailbox is gone today because there's all kinds of traffic coming up there. I watch these people going to work in the morning, they're stressed out, they're impatient, they're held up on 4100, I understand that. Holy cow, they come up the street, not 25 miles an hour, 40 and 50 miles an hour. You've got kids going to school, it is a concern. It needs to be an awareness. Maybe you can help stimulate that awareness with the contractor and with the police. I don't know how much time the police have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have David and/or Enik Clements.
Thank you, council. My name is David Clements, this is my son, Enik Clements, and I'm actually grateful for Mr. Draper's comments. We're here to speak actually about one of the codes that you have, Title 23, specifically your animal services code, and an experience we've recently had with the city. We're recent transplants to this area, my son just bought a home in West Valley, and so it's a little bit disheartening on our part to now be before you with an issue that has been a bit unpleasant, but we would like to just share it with you, and then if there's any improvements that can be made, that's what we'd like to accomplish today. My son was at work out of town, and I was at work, and his roommate accidentally let our dog out. Being new to the area, he wasn't licensed yet, but now he's at large. Dog was captured on Monday, November 4th, so about a month ago. When we discovered that, a family friend went to pick him up, came from Sandy to pick him up, had a difficulty with it because they weren't allowed to because they weren't the owner. So the following day, I gave permission, they came back from Sandy, still to come pick up the dog, and was told, well, now you have to promise to get him neutered. Well, the family friend doesn't have that authority, and once we found that out, we did some homework and asked questions, why? And we were told, well, because he's a husky, and he's one of the top two breeds in our city that roams at large, not your dog, but huskies in general. After doing more research, we asked the question, well, state code prevents breed-specific rules, so how can you implement that rule, not just specific to our dog, but any dog? And over the next few days, as I worked with animals control, who by and large was pleasant to work with, the answers just kept getting a little more convoluted and difficult to understand, from having to bring in x-rays, to bring in blood work so they can look at it to see if our dog really is breed-worthy, at which point I realized we're just kind of not, we're being given the runaround. So not knowing where to turn, being new to the area, not understanding this former government, I called the mayor, just say, point me in the right direction, who can I talk to next in the chain of command? And he told me, well, it's a Friday, nobody's there, but on Tuesday, the day after Veterans Day, I'll get back to you. He did have someone call me, that was not a pleasant experience, because I think the individual was a little bit either upset or embarrassed that the mayor called him to call me. So, but the answer was, I asked, how do I get a neuter waiver? Because I understand the code provides for a neuter waiver, spay or neuter waiver, and they said, well, you can't have one, your dog's a husky, we don't give those for huskies. It occurred to me that perhaps in Title 23 of the West Valley City Code, the last revision appears about 2005, whereas the state code was modified in 2015, and it made me wonder, perhaps the city is operating under an old policy or practice that just hasn't been updated. And so we still would like to get that waiver, but when I've asked for an application to file, a request for a waiver, I've been told there's no application process, it simply is a verbal yes or no from the director, which leads to an arbitrary decision on many fronts. So we're here today really to kind of share our story, to say, look, we have a dog that is a purebred dog that has property rights, which by law are recognized as a property right. We're not here to make a claim, we're not here to threaten anything, we're simply here to say that perhaps the way the code is being implemented, at least toward us, maybe should be revisited, A, to create an application process for the spay waiver, so that individuals' due process rights aren't being violated, as was the case with us; B, that there actually be a set of criteria to get that waiver, because it doesn't appear to be any at this point, there's nothing in the code, it's all arbitrary; C, that a property right in the waiver process is recognized, both Utah and the United States Constitution recognize takings laws and property rights and how those are addressed. The code doesn't do that, and neither does the waiver process do that. And then lastly, just so that anyone else that goes through this, we would like to see some change so that others don't have to go through the headache that we've gone through down this road. So we'd like, at some point, to have someone tell us why we can't file an application to get a waiver or have it rejected formally. And if we've missed the boat somewhere, we'd like to be informed of that, but that's our plea to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Representative Elizabeth Waite.
Good evening, it's nice to see you again. I came to speak primarily to the resolution connected with House Bill 411, and you just talked about that, and I understand it's going to be on an agenda upcoming, but I just wanted to thank you for the consideration and the discussion and the deliberation of the concepts in considering a resolution, but also through the discussion, I've actually learned what the council and the city are considering, and I am excited to know. I hope other people have more and more opportunity to know. So going to the comments that I've just heard about education and the website and other ways, I'll think about that also, just to help steer people to the website, but also in conjunction with the 411 consideration and other things that are going on in the planning and discussions for the power source and that carbon-free and emissions, lower emissions utilities. I appreciate all of the exploration of those that is going on. So that's what I wanted to express tonight, and I look forward to hearing what the discussion is when that's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Beesock.
I've got lots of notes. Jim Beesock, West Valley City, it's all on file. Got some notes, but I'm going to defer till next week or later to get more data on this. On the animal control thing, hopefully you guys look at that, because I know when we were doing the discussion a year ago, when I brought up with the cat change, we talked about the breed specific and about the state laws and stuff like that, so maybe it's an education thing with the animal control officers that they're using the wrong thing, because you guys were very clear when we were talking about pack dogs and, you know, and all that stuff, that they, you know, that you couldn't be breed specific and, you know, and all that stuff. It was a very clear thing, and you guys have had that, so hopefully you'll bring that back up and be able to clear up his question on there. That's all I want to talk about tonight, like I said, I'm going to request more data.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Markham.
Okay, Mike Markham, you guys have heard my drill. I want to thank Lane for his presentation today at the study meeting on code enforcement. Like I said, I'm a huge fan of our code enforcement, but we do have, we are not the only city that has problems. Murray City has their problems. I've been in parts of this valley, clear up in Pepperwood, and there are some nasty houses up there. People like to brag about living in Pepperwood, there are some nasty houses up there. So I just, I can't stress how important I think our code enforcement is in working with our city. We've got a double-edged sword, because we're automatically looked at, not in favorable light because of where we are on the west side. So we have to try a little bit harder than some of these other cities, and I think we're doing a good job of getting things cleaned up. I just want to see it continue. And I want to thank Public Works for their efforts in clearing the snow and doing what they needed to do. I just hope that our traffic enforcement people were able to be out inside all those cars parked on the streets because the snowplows couldn't get around. So now we have an issue that the snowplows can't get around and clean the streets, and the summertime, we have the issue that the street sweepers can't get around and clean the gutters be quick because we have the streets loaded with cars. Street sweepers can see from one time to the next, or I can, maybe they can't, they are, you know, their clean spots continually go around the same cars, same spots, time and time again. There needs to be a camera or something on these, on these snowplows and on these sweeper trucks to get the offenders. There's been a car parked at my house, up the street from me through all of the snowstorms and never did move. You know, people like to leave their garbage cans out. I give them one day, then I roll it in front of their driveway, then they have to get out of their car and finally roll it in. So I'm not very well-liked in my neighborhood, but I think we have a pretty nice little neighborhood because of a guy like me calling and staying on top of things. My house is an investment, it's the largest thing I'll ever buy that we'll appreciate. So we all need to pay attention to what we have, what we live in, and I guess are just people that like living in don'ts. And if they could cluster together, we'd be okay, they don't need to be in the middle of the neighborhood where people care. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Bell.
I'm here today to speak in support of the city passing a resolution to on HB 411. I wanted to thank Representative Waite for being one of the co-sponsors of that bill. I also wanted to thank John, I don't know if he's still here, for what I thought was a balanced and thoughtful analysis of a very difficult topic. I used to do that same work up at Kennicott, evaluating multimillion-dollar projects, and I can tell you that with the scarcity of information and data, it's kind of nerve-wracking because it's very difficult to come to, you know, definitive conclusions on that. I was, I did question his timeline a little bit. He showed that the full benefit, or the full green energy thing would kick in about 2024, I think is what he said, where the bill says it is 2030, and I suspect, I don't know for sure, but I suspect that it will take many years for Rocky Mountain Power to replace the various assets and to build or acquire new ones. So I suspect that maybe the clean energy part of that won't be deliverable until further out in time. As I understand it, there are anywhere from seven to 12 municipalities that have already adopted this resolution, and this is an opportunity for West Valley City to be able to share in that process with other communities of interest. That will give you the collective bargaining power that you need with these other communities to talk to Rocky Mountain Power, while at the same time, you should be able to represent your own specific needs, West Valley City's own specific needs, in the ways that are appropriate for West Valley City. One thing I didn't see in the analysis that I think is really important, and that is, this is a powerful and powerful way for West Valley City, which is what, the second or third-largest community in Utah, to be able to make a significant dent in the air quality or improvement in the air quality of our state here along the Wasatch Front. I'm old, it won't be too many years before I shuffle off this mortal coil, but I was babysitting my two-year-old grandson today, and as I was driving over here, I could barely see the Wasatch Mountains from here. So this is something that we really need to take seriously, and this is an opportunity for West Valley City, its residences and its businesses, to participate in something that could make a significant improvement in air quality along the Wasatch Front here. I understand the city's reluctance to kind of move forward without having all of the real necessary details. I think that's a bit of a scary proposition, right? But at the same time, I, as I understand it, the resolution is a non-binding But at the same time, I, as I understand it, the resolution is a non-binding resolution, it's an aspirational goal. It states, and I quote here in the, from the bill, "To adopt a resolution no later than December thirty-first that states, that states a goal of achieving an amount equivalent to one hundred percent of the annual electric energy supply for participating customers from a renewable energy resource by two thousand and thirty." So, it's an aspirational goal. Now, there is no, as I read the bill, and I've studied it fairly carefully, there's no specific rescission clause for a city in the bill. However, there are a couple of practical mechanisms that I think the city could use if necessary. If the city were to pass a resolution that leaves the door open, as was the discussion at the study group, then the next step is to reach an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power. So, procedurally, if you fail to reach an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power, you essentially have opted out. If you reach an agreement, you still have to pass an ordinance, a binding ordinance, and in that case, if you've got all kinds of pushback from residents or businesses or whomever, or you had second thoughts, then at that point, you could fail to pass the residents, and that effectively would opt you out of the program as well. So, I urge you to leave the door open, adopt the resolution, and as John was saying, once you've adopted the resolution, go full throttle, add it, get in there and negotiate in the best interests of West Valley City, so that you can get the best deal possible. That will allow you to come to a decision with much greater knowledge than we have right now, and should be something that will allow you to go ahead meaningfully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have about one minute left in our thirty minutes of audit. Is there anybody else here that wants to take that minute and make a public comment? Chris Bell, can you give us your address and say what you gotta say?
Chris Bell, forty-one thirty Middle Park. I want to again thank John and the staff for the wonderful presentation they did on the HB Four-Eleven. I want to reiterate some of the other themes, thinking as a city, have an opportunity to be a leader, push forward, whether we pass this resolution and aim for HB Four-Eleven or some of the other plans that the city has, I think we need to take that role as a leader, as the second-largest community in the state, that we want clean energy for our future. Sorry, I ran up here, I shouldn't have ran. But to give our residents, my fellow community members, that option, I sit on the student, on the community, school community council at my daughter's school, I'm on the board of the HOA where I live, I represent a lot of people, and I want to do what's right for them, and I want you to do what's right for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, turn to our city manager for any comments.
None tonight, sir.
Thank you. City council comments.
I just want to thank everyone who came and spoke to us, and we really appreciate hearing from you, thank you.
I think I'll make a couple of comments. From time to time, we hear comments on things that we discuss frequently or regularly that we're working on constantly, such as safety concerns, enforcement of traffic laws, things like that. One thing that we might want to check into, Mr. Pyle, is our compliance with the state law on this animal question.
We're in compliance. We've had long discussion of this particular situation up and down the chain already.
Maybe we need to find out what information's being told by residents.
I actually sent you an email as a council while we were waiting.
Okay, thank you. Another question that we might want to discuss in the future, but maybe move it to our strategic planning meeting, is the dissemination of information. This comes up frequently, and we have the green sheet in our bill, but I'm not sure the right information's on there. Maybe we need to make some policy decisions as to what and how and so forth with that. Finally, there was one comment that I wanted to note, you know, how often is the West Valley News published? I think it's bi-monthly, but it's not us, that's a private entity that publishes, the West Valley Journal, and they include whatever information they want to in the West Valley Journal. Okay, so now we are going to act on resolutions that we have discussed in prior meetings. Often, there's not a lot of discussion with these resolutions because our questions have been asked and answered previously. These are the things on our agenda for tonight's official action. Brings us to item seven A on our agenda, Resolution Nineteen-Dash One-Fifty-Six. This is to purchase for the police department a Leica brand scanner. This allows them to set up a laser that does all of the measurements and diagramming for car accidents and outside incidents that need evidentiary support so they can be brought to, so they can be first investigated and then brought to court and in a sustainable manner and accurately depict what happened. Mr. Pyle, any further information that we should have on that?
No, sir. I think that's a good description.
We have a Leica scanner that we have used for interior purposes, we've been using different technology for exterior, we've been informed that that's outdated and not as good as this. This will cost, the price tag is not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the council. Move for approval of Resolution Nineteen-Dash One-Five-Six.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? To the city recorder, please.
Councilman Petus Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembular?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution Nineteen-Dash One-Five-Eight. We are building a parks and
Public Works.
Public Works building, they need to be furnished, this is to purchase furniture for the Public Works and Park Operations facilities, price tag one hundred and sixteen thousand, almost one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the capital improvement fund, if I remember correctly. Any other information, Mr. Pyle? To the council for discussion and motion.
Move for approval, Resolution Nineteen-Dash One-Five-Eight.
Second.
We have a motion to second, Ms. Kimmack.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Petus Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tembular?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. These are items that require official action, but usually not much discussion, they're more of the routine matter of right-of-ways. In this case, we have some reappointments of members of the city council to the housing authority, which is another hat that we wear, and we can take them individually or as a body, Resolution's Nineteen-One-Fifty-Nine through Nineteen-One-Sixty-three to the council.
I move for approval of all the items of the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion to second, Ms. Kimmack.
Councilman Petus Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northell?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tembular?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Do we have any need for a closed session, or are you through the business tonight?
No, certainly.
Okay, then we have concluded our business on our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
On the opposed, we are officially adjourned.